Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, February 21st, 2019 meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I begin this evening, is anybody recording in the audience tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We do have a little bit of business to begin with that one of our full voting members is absent this evening. She's not feeling well, so we're going to bring up our alternate members. Ms. Blaze will serve as a full voting member this evening. Do you have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our first seven o'clock public hearing is a Mr. Ross Magnin requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.2.1 and a variance under Section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow the use of a two-family on property located at 147 Burnett Street, MAP 9, parcel 39. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Hi, could you approach the lectern, please, sir? Introduce yourself and just kind of go over what you want to do.
Hey, my name is Ross Magnin. I live at 147 Burnett Street. In about 1974, '75, my father built an in-law apartment for my grandmother, and I guess it wasn't zoned, but I do pay taxes through the assessor's office on a two-family. But I was trying to get a mortgage on the house to build on the other part of the property for my daughter. I built a house for her because the lot is now split, but the bank won't give me a mortgage because it's not zoned, two-family, so that's why I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Cussie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so there was never a permit fold for a two-family?
I was five years old, I don't know.
Yep, so there's nothing on record.
I remember it being built, it was about that big, but that's all I remember.
I mean, it's more of an accessory apartment?
Yeah, it's a small, little, one-bedroom, that was for my little grandmother.
Right, so we allow those?
Yeah.
Accessory apartments?
Mm-hmm.
Seems to me it would be best used as an accessory apartment versus a two-family.
Well, the thing is, the bank won't give me the loan, I don't think, without it being zoned, a two-family is what the issue is, what I was told by the mortgage company. An accessory apartment, I think, was it under 800 square feet, I think, is what it is? It's a, yeah, it's not even that big.
Right.
But I don't know if it's, it's just a money thing, that's all it is with me, with the bank.
I mean, it fits it perfectly, one bedroom, one bath, you know?
I just don't want it to have any stipulations on me getting a mortgage to go forward and building a house for my daughter, that's all.
Yeah, and what were you saying about the land being split?
The lot was split now, so I can build a house for her down there, and I had it all going, and then all of a sudden the mortgage company said, "I can't because it isn't zoned, two-family." But even though I pay taxes on a two-family through the assessor's office, but through the zoning, it wasn't.
And access to this, is there two accesses to this?
Actually, yeah, there's two doors up top, and then there's one through the cellar also.
Two more questions for you. Mr. Cholo.
Hi. Those are separate areas, separate doors you're talking about, separate and not one right next to another?
No, there's one in the, well, the front of theirs, but it's the back of my house, and then there's one on the side.
Okay. Now, in your little brief that you sent, you say that the assessor's office has it listed as a two-family.
I pay taxes on a two-family, the trash bill is a two-family, everything.
Do you, the listing book and page and everything, is it listed on that as a two-family?
I can't answer that because I don't know for sure, I don't know.
And do you happen to know what the square footage is?
Of that apartment?
Yeah.
Approximately, I think I had it written down there on the map, it was like 28 by maybe like 22 or something like that.
Yeah, it's like 720, 28 or something like that, according to the.
Yeah, that, yeah, I measured it out.
The lot size that you have, it's 21, yeah, that's all I have for right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the application speaks to a special permit and a variance. Lot size doesn't meet it, so you'd need relief on lot size, but I'm curious why a special permit on 3221? If it's an existing two-family, or is it not being recognized as a?
Well, because he's been paying taxes on it for all these years, but it was never zoned for it, so the special permit would cover that part of it.
Okay.
So it can actually be, as far as the bank's eyes, it can be listed as a two-family at that point.
All right, I mean, the apartment is certainly under, you know, I have no concerns around the size, but I would lean towards that. No, thank you, sorry, I have no direct questions, but I would lean towards Mr. Cussie's comments on an accessory apartment versus a two-family, but I don't know where that lands with the application. It's considerable relief to be made for a variance for this lot. So that's something that I think we'd have to take through the paces on the requirements to apply for a variance. But I don't have any, I'll reserve for any rebutters, I don't have any direct questions. Thank you for being here, sir.
Okay. Ms. Blaze?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So just to clarify, you have one piece of land that's split into two, and you're going to have two separate buildings on that, one of which has a separate apartment?
What it is now is my house would be a lot apartment on one side, and I have two big garages down below. And I'm going to turn one of those garages into a house for my daughter. So I'd split the lot in order to do that, and then this came up, so that's where I'm at.
So one of those garages that you're turning into a house, the bank is saying, "No, you need..."
Because I need to have it as some of the two-family.
Okay. And you have, has your bank denied you?
Yes.
For that reason?
He goes about, yes.
Hmm.
Yeah, I know.
I think.
Yeah, I don't want to go through all this either.
Yeah, I would agree, it more fits like an accessory apartment, in my eyes, but I have no other questions, thank you.
Okay. So I think that kind of sheds light on it as well, Mr. Mayor, going back to some of your concerns with the variance, is that this is an existing building that he's going to renovate and turn into a living property? So he's not actually building another structure on the property?
I'm going to be adding on to it, I shouldn't say that, I'm going to be adding on to that existing building.
Okay.
The garage.
The building is there already.
Right, okay.
The garage, correct, okay.
So do we want to take this in smaller bites? We'll go with the special permit issue first, and then go with the variance issue second? At least I will vote on it.
Yeah, and I think that's prudent, Mr. Chairman, if I can circle back to a couple of questions.
Most certainly can.
Raised on some of those points. So could you describe a little bit more about exactly what's going to be done as far as construction?
As long as I can get the money now, yeah, but what's going to happen, I have an existing garage down, I have two of them, the 25 by 25, that were built in the '50s by my grandfather. And I'm going to add on to one of them, 20 feet or whatever it is, and then make a house for her, a little two-bedroom house.
Understand, and I want to further clarify, because that's kind of secondary to my question. My question is, for the second apartment that makes this a two-family?
Oh, okay, all right, I thought you were talking about the other.
Yeah, no, yeah, within your rights of, I know you've got a vision, and I hope that you can fulfill it, but the existing apartment that makes this property a two-family, is there any construction planned or any changes?
Absolutely not, no.
So this is?
It's been there way since '74, '75.
Okay, but part of your plans forward are not to modify in any way, and that footprint doesn't change?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, so the bank's main concern is they want, because it's a two-family, they want it to be?
Zoned to two-family.
Zoned to two-family.
It's crazy, but that's what it is.
Yes, thanks. This second structure that you're going to be turning into a livable structure, adding on the 20 feet, is that part of this 21,000 square feet on the lot, or is that a separate lot of land?
There's two lots, I believe, one's 21,000, I believe, one's 20,000. I believe the 20,000 is the other one, that's the building is going to be on.
Okay. And this, this one that's 21,000, that's where you've had the existing apartment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I'm sorry, sir, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Blaze?
Nothing, yeah.
Okay. So a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion, before we enter the end, Mr. Chairman, if there are any rebutters?
Do we have any rebutters present?
Yeah, well, I have one right here.
Okay, do you have any concern, does the rebutter want to speak?
Please?
Does the rebutter want to speak? Do you have any comments to add?
Hi, I think it'd be great to hear.
If you could just approach the lectern.
Can you go to the microphone so the folks at home can hear you? You just have to introduce yourself.
I'm shy.
You just have to introduce yourself, give us your name and address, please, first, and then just add your comments.
Go ahead.
Yep.
No, it doesn't matter, as long as you're considering a rebutter.
Just want to make sure that we get everything on record, because my wife's watching at home, and I'm going to test her later.
Shining the camera on him wherever it may be. Bob Dupree, 138 Burnett Street, a rebutter across the street from Mr. Magnin's house, and I wholeheartedly agree with it. And he's been a great neighbor, he's respected in the neighborhood, he does quality work, and I know nobody that has a negative feeling about Russ and his plans or whatever. So I'm totally in favor of what has to be done, to get done.
Thanks for coming forward.
Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate you being here.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing now?
Motion to close.
Thank you, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so any comments? It seems like, you know, he's been paying taxes on the property, the two-family as it is for all these years. It's listed as such on trash, and basically, I think it sounds like a formality to me.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just make an opening comment, and then I'll make a motion, if I may. The, I think, I mean, it's a, I won't call it classic, but it's a case of kind of, you know, correcting an arrears, an apartment that was put in. We've certainly seen that activity before, gentlemen coming forward and kind of putting it on the books as a legal two-family. If the building commissioner were here, I would ask him if there was any inspection history, or if there was a need to inspect this apartment. I might, so what I'd like to do, without any further, is I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit, but I'd like to put a condition on that, that inspectional services does in fact conduct an inspection of that, of that two-family, and make sure that-
Has it already been recently done, at least it's documented?
That's correct. Just to make sure that it would meet all the current regulations of being an approved, safe apartment, and anything that might need to be brought up the code. I would put that as a condition of the special permit, but I would make a motion to approve with that condition, as well as the standard conditions.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cussie?
Agreed.
Okay, Ms. Blaze?
Approved.
Approved. So the first part, your special permit is all set.
All right.
The next thing is the issue of the variance. So we have before us, obviously, he wants to add on to an existing building. I think you've all heard the same testimony that I did, so we'll have to really rehash it, but.
Does this application cover that second building?
No.
No.
No, no. This is just, that's just something that's going to happen.
No construction being done.
Once it's done.
Right, so no construction being done, this must be something that, if we approve the variance on the 5.4?
What is necessitating? What is necessitating the variance?
So in my, Mr. Chairman, in my view, if I may?
Yes, please.
I believe the variance is based on lot size for a two-family.
Mm-hmm.
So this is an RB?
Ah, yes, okay.
So zone district, which would require a minimum of 29,000. So the applicant would need relief, 21, 841, so we can do the math, eight and change, that he needs relief from, because the lot size isn't large enough. But then I would submit for the board's consideration that, you know, in approving the special permit, I don't know that we would want to come back this and back him out of this with not approving the variance.
I agree. I mean, it seems, again, this seems administrative to me.
Right.
For the most part.
Yeah, so if it pleases the board, I would make the motion to approve.
It's my feeling is that there's sewage and water, there's no septic, so, you know, he's not a complete fielder.
Do I have a second on the approval of the variance?
Second.
Mr. Cussie?
Agreed.
Ms. Blaze?
Approved.
And I approve, you're all set. So the one condition will be that if there has not been a recent inspection of the accessory use or two-family apartment, Caleb will come by and just take a look at it, make sure it took the standard.
What do I do, just call, or he calls me, or how does that work?
I'm not sure what the schedule is like, I know obviously he's not here this evening, so maybe by Monday or Tuesday, give him a call.
All right.
And, you know, he's usually pretty prompt about it.
Great.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, sir, good luck. Okay, give him a minute to clear out. We have a 7:10 PM applicant, ATS Equipment Incorporated, requesting a variance on the Section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a partial demolition of an existing garage and the replacement with a larger garage, and to amend a special permit under Sections 8.2.3 and 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to extend a non-conforming use and to increase the impervious area on property located at 487 Washington Street, MAP 57, parcel 21. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here, representing the applicant, speaking to you tonight about 487 Washington Street.
I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but can I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
It's official now. Just a little bit about the property. ATS, or its holding company, which is an LLC, which owns the property, bought the property back in 2007, 2008. We came before the town, at that time, this was the J.E. Murray site next to the racquetball club facility. It was a, you know, a sales building, kind of steel building, and then out back, two garage facilities that were existing at the time. When ATS bought the property, we'd come before the board and received a bunch of permits from your board and approval from planning board. What happened at that point was ATS moved in and redid that front sales area, and did a lot of site work, including retaining walls, and put a stormwater system in and the like, so generally improved the property. Since that time, there's about 12 full-time employees that are at this location, and a few seasonal employees at the location, and for all intents and purposes, the business is doing well there, and it plans to stay there, and I think that's a great thing. So what we come to you on now is there are two garage facilities in the rear. The one that's closest to the sales building is in pretty tough shape, lots of leaks, foundation issues, and so the desire is to make that a safer workspace. There's some storage and things that happens in there, some warehousing that happens in there, need to make that space a safer place. So when you started to look at that, the design made sense to try to make some connection to that main sales area. So the design of the building now, which increases the square footage by just under 1,300 square feet of that garage, this would now allow a connection from the back garages to the front in that sales area, making it a little more functional. It picks up the safety in the area, it's an area now that you wouldn't want to store anything really valuable in, and that would be the desire, is that this would be a safe, dry, storage area, and an area that you could work in. So the existing structure that's there that would be demolished, shown on your plans, is 1,440 square feet. We're going to replace that with a 2,726 square foot facility, so an increase of 1,286 square feet. A few things that happen when we do that, and as currently designed, the existing structure is seven feet from the side property line. In this district, you're supposed to be 10, so it's already a non-conforming structure in that sense. The design would be to push it back so that it's only 3.1 feet off that sideline. And if you look, the rationale is trying to line up the rear of the new building with the rear of the existing garage, which is further to the rear of the property. So right now, there's a jog, and it doesn't make a lot of sense functionally, it doesn't make a lot of sense from a building design perspective, there's several issues that get created because of that. So this would, the proposed design would move that building a little bit closer to the property line. Now, what's over there right now is a flat area and a retaining wall, and some fencing. There's a significant slope difference, I would say, from, you know, the racquetball property to this property. So that was done many years ago, in my understanding, anyway, to put that wall, or at least most of that wall, was in. So, you know, from the neighbor's perspective, from that business, those businesses' perspective, there's a vegetative buffer in there that'll remain, and this will be an improvement aesthetically, it'll be a new structure. It's encroaching four feet closer, but it's sort of de minimis when you think about where it is already. So the issues that we come before you on, you know, we've got the side yard setback variance, and we've got to amend our special permit, we cover more than 15% of the area, and this is an aquifer two-zone. So we cover currently 73%. Believe it or not, the percentage doesn't change, but the square footage increases by 280 square feet. So 280 feet more of impervious area would be created as a result of the building, and the reason it's-
That would be the building expansion, correct?
Yes.
Or the replacement of?
It's the building moving back a little bit, because right now, if, where the building is now, and where the building will go, it's part, we're covering more of the parking area with building, essentially. So we don't increase the impervious area by 1,300 square feet, the size of the new building increase, it's only a few square feet because of the fact that we're already over, we're already going over what is existing parking. So, and the stormwater system is plenty big, and it was oversized to begin with, frankly, so it can handle, you know, the increase, and there'll be roof drains that'll go right into that system, a little cleaner in that sense. So really no, you know, not a lot of change there, if anything, maybe even a net positive from the fact that you're getting the roof discharge straight into the system. But we've also got to, we were also applied for, excuse me, a special permit to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use, as this is a non-conforming use in the highway business district. So Caleb's zoning determination indicated that a special permit would be necessary for that reason. Beyond what we'll need from the board here tonight, we'll also be going back to the planning board to amend the site plan, fairly minor modification, but we've got to make that process happen nonetheless. And those would be the forms of relief that we would need in total. And so again, from the board here tonight, we're looking for a side yard setback variance to be 3.1 feet off of that side yard, to amend the special permit for more than 15% impervious in the aquifer two, and a special permit to expand a pre-existing non-conforming I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any rebutters present? Would you like to make comments? Okay, if you could approach the lectern one at a time, give us your name and address, and speak of your concerns, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Shea, 14 Stone Street, behind the existing property. I don't have any concerns with the expansion and replacement of the existing buildings because they're kind of decrepit today, but my complaints with the business is there's buffers that was created back in 2007, 2008 that have not been kept up. So looking out my backyard, it looks like I'm on a construction zone, a construction site every day. So my ask is that the arborvitae's and some of the trees that were planted seven or eight years ago, or 12 years ago, be replaced, and keep that buffer between the existing properties and the new business.
Okay, so we could actually add that as a condition of a special permit?
Perfect.
Which we could say that the buffer needs to be improved, corrected, and properly maintained.
Excellent.
I will admit, however, we've done that in the past with some other businesses, and we have varying degrees of success. It would really be up to somebody like yourself to sort of check in once in a while, to make sure it's being adequately cared for.
Okay.
And, you know, address it with the building commissioner's office, if that's necessary.
Perfect.
I'd rather just let you know ahead of time that sometimes we have great success, sometimes not so much.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just to respond to Mr. Shea, just spoke with the manager on site, and, you know, we wouldn't have any problem, you know, taking a look at that area, it sounds like there's some pines that have had some issues and were cut down over the years, as far as more of a maintenance thing, but certainly, we would be okay with a condition that, you know, make sure the buffering exists as necessary back there.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Maureen Shea. So my concern is the equipment that goes so high up in the back. I mean, you look back and you see it, and it's neon green, and it's that vibrant orange, and it sits in the back. So when I look out, you know, you have lights come that come into the house, and then you're also seeing it. So we're retiring in a couple of years, and if we go to sell the house, I can see people looking out the backyard and saying, "I don't think so." So that's a concern of mine.
Okay.
So I know that, I don't know if they can put them up front, and not so much in the back, because they're so tall, you couldn't get a tree that tall to cover it. But we still need, there's a linked-in fence that when you look out, and there's no trees left there, they just have died and never been replaced.
Okay.
So at least maybe the bigger equipment, I don't know if they can put it out towards Route 20 side instead of our side.
Again, that's something we can allow the applicant to address, but we can also condition that in the permit, if necessary.
Right.
We certainly want everybody to be good neighbors, and we want it all to work well.
Right.
You know, the other, the trick here is that, you know, you're in a residential area, it's a budding of business zone, highway business too, so we'd like to find the perfect balance, if we could, to make both parties happy. So we'll definitely work toward that, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Scott Jess, I live at 16 Stone Street, so I'm directly in back of that business.
Okay.
I have several issues with that business. I'm trying to be, I don't think they're a good neighbor. I'm trying to be proactive, I like business in town, I understand they're a good business, but from the day one that they took over there in 2008, 2007, I've had a lot of issues, a lot of troubles. Excuse me. So being directly in back of them, I had trouble with the light, which, I don't know if it was him, but they put a light on over the top. The second thing is, they came on my property, and they're talking about the pines, they clear-cut eight to 10 trees because one of them fell through their machine windshield, which, if the machines are backwards, backed into the lot, which is what we're going to ask for a condition of, because we don't want to see the booms as we drive into our driveways. It doesn't look aesthetically pleasant, okay? I know they're trying to run a business, but they can move the yacht around. I don't have a problem with the garage extension or anything like that, but we need to put some conditions on there. The fence that the tree fell through has not been repaired, it's kind of repaired, but the shrubbery that the fence and everything got taken out by the tree has not been fixed. So there's bare spots, and when we were here before, when they were first taking the business in, they said, "Oh, no, you'll be, this will all fill in, you won't even see the fence, you won't see any of our machines." And I know exactly what he's saying, when he say, "Well, it's up to you to police it," and then he come back, but we know how things go with Lowe's and Santander and Diamond Chevrolet. I just don't want to be looking at their machines, and I don't think I have to, and they can still run their business.
Sure.
One of the other things is, they were blasting the ledge, because they're doing a little adding of their own. My fear was that they wanted to come back through that paper street that's there, which is my registered land, because they want to come this way, closer to my house, which I'm never going to let happen. They are saying they're on the side by the racquetball, that's fine, because the ledge that they were blasting was vibrating my house on Sunday morning at 11 o'clock. The thing here is, the town seems to be reactive, and do lawsuits and everything, and try to get people to clean up their act, we need to be proactive, make sure they do the job right the first time. So, I caught, I, excuse me, I went to the guy and said, "Stop jackhammering on a Sunday morning at 11:00," and he did shortly thereafter stop and cease and desist. But he shouldn't have done that anyways, I shouldn't have to tell. Another instance is, they like to backfill their yard to make it flat so they had more parking. So, 2:00 in the morning, dump trucks dropping reclaimed tar, I got beeping going on, and the tailgate slamming at 2:00 in the morning. I guess my bottom line is, it adds a lot of stress to my life, my wife, and my kids. And that's why I say that they're not being too friendly. So, I do have issues, and I'm directly in back of them. So, I'm not off to the side or anything, I'm in, so, I didn't like them coming on my property, cutting all those trees down, because now I have a big hole, a gaping hole in between, and I can see directly into all their machines and all the booms, and that's not what I want.
You know, I keep hearing about those machines, can you describe what they are? Do you know?
They're backhoes. They have big shovel backhoes, excavators.
Yeah.
And they have the skylifts and stuff that I get that they got to put up because saved, um, security, if they're down, they're going to get stolen, right? I get that they got to be up, but he created a problem by cutting down all those other trees, without my permission, by the way, on my property. And so, they had to come around the fence off of his property to cut the trees, and I just find this one day when I come home from work. They did it while I was at work. And they're 200-year-old trees. My house is built in a tree grove that J. Murray cut out and built the house, okay? Murray Construction built my house in 2000. So, I know what was there, and I can tell that they were 200-year-old trees, but no permission, no asking, they just clear-cut, and now I got a gaping hole that I can never fix or fill in or get back. That's what I'm saying.
And those trees belong to you, they were on your property?
They were on my property. They were on the registered land. My thing is all decked out, the paper street, I believe is Oak Street, that, I guess they took away, it's doesn't, never going to go a road there. And I have Prentice down the side in between Jim and Maureen. That's all my registered land from the Land Corps in Boston. So, they did that, and I know, that's why, I got to bring that to your attention. I don't think they're being a very good neighbor. There's a lot of conditions, if they want to do all this, they got to clean up their act on the other side.
I understand that, okay.
I don't know, he brought up the pines, he knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
They went in there and they took the trees down. And while I was at work, I come home and I find this gaping hole in my backyard. You can see how frustrated I would be.
Yeah, I can definitely see that, I understand that. Okay.
I've had to have conversations with them, I've gone in there, I've talked to the man and, you know, the manager, and he's been honest and decent with me, but this stuff has to stop. I mean, the midnight dumpings and the noise, and it's just not good.
Yeah, and you know, and I'm definitely not justifying that action, please believe me, but I know that like when they're doing resurfacing of roads and they're grinding the roads, it's generally, it's an 11 to 7 project, and I don't agree with them creating noise for you, but I know that I've seen that, I've heard in my own neighborhood, when they're resurfacing their highways and roadways, and, you know.
I'm not going to go into what's illegal and legal, because they obviously got somebody to take the reclamation off of somebody's road and drive it onto their property and dump it at 2:00 in the morning. If you ask me, in your honest truth, I think that's a little shady, because then they use their machines on their property and smooth it all out and flatten it, and what they did was, without permits or whatever, they made their parking lot bigger and flatter so they could park more machines. They skirted the town again, that's what I was talking about before. Where we always seem to be reactive, and I got to go sue, get a lawyer or whatever, and say, "Hey, that's wrong," right? I mean, I was there when they built the wall, I grew up in town, the wall itself, to make them a feasible property, was a disaster. I mean, the wall is never, would never pass in engineering right now, if they would say it fail, because he's got it so stacked trying to make it flat. Just my opinion, that's why I'm here, that's why, I got a lot of information, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Broder? Attorney Broder, excuse me.
I suggested before that we'd be okay doing some buffering work in the back, and I think that is the answer that I can offer to you. You know, some of the questions that come up about operations issues and whatnot, I mean, I don't think, you know, I don't think the applicants here suggesting, you know, that, we want to debate those issues at, in this forum, I guess. But, you know, for the purpose of the application that's in front of you, if the board thinks it's, you know, appropriate, and we've agreed to it, you know, to add a buffering concept in the back, that's fine, we're okay with that. You know, not seeing the equipment and things like that, I think that's, that's all we can really offer is the buffering, you know, it's, I don't think the operations are going to, can be substantially changed in the sense that we can't not have equipment be seen from, you know, any, either one of these sides. At this point, we'll do what we can to buffer, and if there's a suggestion, we'll take it. But I think the booms being up high and orange and green, I'm not sure we can really do much about that at this point. So.
Okay.
We'd be accepting of a condition to do a buffering, mixed planting in the back, maybe arborvitae's mixed in with some pines, or, you know, some suggestion that we could speak about, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Cussey, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, so the water, the drainage system, is that going to be reviewed by the planning board?
If they deem it's necessary, I mean, I think.
I mean, who's saying that it handles the amount of water?
Sure.
Has anyone looked at that?
Well, I asked the design engineer who's land planning, Norman Hill from land planning, that very question. He couldn't be here tonight, but he did tell me definitively, the system is essentially oversized and can easily handle this amount, you know, of new impervious area. It's 280 square feet of new impervious area.
And also, for the condition that the planning board definitely addressed that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we surely can.
And also the buffer, the planning board could get involved with that and.
Yeah, site plan approval.
Site plan approval and design something that's going to, you know, pacify the neighbors. I mean, that's.
Sure.
I was, I was going to say, from the front, Route 20, I mean, it's a very nice-looking business, you know, that's, it's neat, and, but I haven't been in the back, so I don't know what it looks like, but it sounds rough.
So, a suggestion might be, and we do have to, and we have just recently filed with the planning board to amend that site plan, but we were waiting to come before you, before we move forward with that process. So, before we go into planning board, we can revise our plan, submit it again to planning board with a, with a proposed buffering scheme, and we could review that at planning board.
Another question, there used to be a big diesel tank on that property, does that still exist?
It's still, it's still there, yes. Yeah, when we, when we did the permitting in 2007, there was a condition.
Yeah, I was just thinking back, it was.
I don't have it in front of me, but I remember the condition was it can't expand or something to that effect. And I think, we had a reasonable discussion about it at the time because it's in the aquifer, so, aquifer 2.
In your brief, there is a limit of 5,000 gallons on it.
I believe that's right.
I think it's a 10,000 gallon tank, but you can only use five, is that what it, I'm not. I just said, I remember it was, it was already existing.
Oh, 2,000 to 25,000 gallons of all types in that thing?
It's a large tank, it doesn't need to be filled to 10,000 gallons.
So, you change your oils in your own equipment and everything right in that garage?
The diesel fuels, probably.
Yeah, but oils, you do all the PMing?
Yeah.
Yep, so you have storage tanks and?
Yes.
Okay. Brake cleans, all kinds of chemicals, you have the correct cabinets.
It's technical that you fuse that type of operation.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm good for now.
Okay. Mr. Cholow?
Yes. This buffer that you're planning on putting in, my concern is that, that it has to be substantial. In other words, I don't think these people, if there were trees there that were cut down, right or wrong, they can't wait 20 years for a tree to grow to sufficient height. I do know arborvitae's grow quickly, but what gets put in should be substantial. Also, the fence that was, that has to be part of, part of what is being fixed and looked at. The fence, and if it requires a new one, a new one should be put in. But I just don't want them to have to wait 20 years until this, these trees grow up and the foliage can help block their view. Put in something substantial.
Sure, and so, on the fence, I think that makes sense anyway, that seems like a, you know, operational kind of safety issue, and the area in the rear is fenced otherwise, so that makes sense. So, to repair the, repair the fence is, is fine. And we can talk about the planting. I say arborvitae's, to be honest, I'm not sure they're the best solution. I was thinking of a mix and kind of a staggered, you know, you do a single row of arborvitae's, and that's not necessarily the same as doing a little bit of off-centering staggering with maybe white pines.
And I'm not a landscaper, I know they grow fast, and I know they grow thick, and people tend to use them as a semi-fence between, between properties, but they, they'll, I'm fine with, you know, whatever plantings that, somebody who's a little bit better educated than I am on landscaping, as long as it's substantial enough that they're not waiting forever for it to grow up.
Sure, understood.
That's it for now.
Mr. Barron?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Broder, two points. You would, I want to go back to the impervious area.
Sure.
So, you had mentioned that this is in, just an increase, just an increase of 280 square feet?
Correct.
And I have no doubt that the water drainage will cover that. But how much of impervious is already on this lot? In total?
I have to dig deep in my file for that information. I know the percentage is 73 percent of the total lot area.
Okay, and that's, yeah, percentage is fine. So, I mean, do you, okay, so 280 and additional to that, we're still going to hover under 80 percent?
Actually, I did the math, and it's still 73 percent, you know, with a rounding one way or the other. I think it might have been a low 73 percent, now it's a high 73 percent.
I mean, my concern is that any increase in impervious service, you know, is a factor. The other point that I want to raise is that I can understand, maybe in the original construction of the original building, why it was jogged back, because you go from 12-3 to 7, I would assume that it jogged back because of setback requirements originally? And if I'm reading this right, so now you want to move it so that it aligns with the other building, the other structure, to a 3.1 setback, and you want relief for 3.1? Is that correct?
We're looking for relief for 3.1. I'm not exactly sure of the history of, you know, what the placement was, you know, the purpose of, and the intent.
That's fair. That's not a hard boundary on that property line, is that, that solid black line that I'm looking at?
The solid black line is the property line.
So, that's a hard, okay, and there's no structure there? That's just, that's just a property line, but there's nothing there to indicate that?
There's a, there's a fence that runs, there's a fence that separates the two parcels.
So, this would come within 3.1 feet of that fence?
Yes.
That they're proposing?
I believe the fence is actually, if you look at the, if you look at the plan there, it may, it straddles the line, is my understanding, so yes, it's something to the effect of 3.1 feet.
What's the material in between, in that space, the 12-3 to now the proposed 3.1? What's the material between the building and the fence? Is that paved?
No, no, it's considered, it's considered pervious area.
So, that's pervious area, so is that a maintained grass area or something?
Yes, I'm not sure it's very pretty, but it's, it's not, it's not, it's not paved, and it's not a compacted gravel situation that would potentially be considered impervious.
Okay. So, that's your increase in, okay, thank you, Mr. Broder. Nothing further for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Place?
I don't have any questions, per se. I'd just like to see everybody get along, you know, just kind of work with everybody. I'd be really upset if my neighbors, you know, was a business like that and taking, going onto my property and taking down trees. So, I'd just like to see that rectified, but I don't really have any questions that haven't been answered or asked already.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So, the 3.1 feet, is the primary purpose of that just to keep the wall straight?
Correct.
From one building to the next? Is it necessary that that wall stays straight for the entire distance?
I mean, that, that's the desire. I mean, it's, you know, it creates that straight line, you know, my understanding is the, you know, in that, in that area, previously, they've got some snow drifting that happens, they've got, you know, issues related to wind, is what was recounted to me. But so, yeah, I mean, I think design-wise, that's the idea, and it, I think functionally, it performs some function as well.
Exactly what is that function? I'm not following the.
Just what I spoke about, I mean, the snow drifts, the, you know, the water, the wind, these are, these are, these are issues that were raised to me by, you know, by the applicant.
So, with respect to the buffer at the rear of the property, was that installed or kept there as a condition of a prior permit?
I will have to dig out the prior permits, but I think what we did was, we showed the site plan as it was existing at that time. Conditions were applicable to the use of the diesel tank, by recollection, but I don't recall too many further conditions than that. At the time, we came in for, while we were in for planning board site plan, and here, the special permit for rendering impervious more than, more than the 15 percent, that was the only permit that I found when I went back to look, so I don't, I don't recall there being any other conditions.
Do you know what year the trees were felled in the back?
I know nothing about the trees, I mean, I can speak to the applicant, you know, about that, but, you know, something obviously we, we're not going to solve here tonight in terms of what the story is or what it wasn't. You know, sometimes there's a misunderstanding as to where property lines are, et cetera, and I don't think we really want to have a debate about that at this point, but we're certainly willing to put a buffering in at this point, as, as far as a mitigating factor to what may or may not, may not have been done in the past, and to mitigate the concerns that have been raised here.
So, and with respect to the 280 square foot of impervious area being added, could this be done without adding to the impervious area?
That's not the proposal. So, at this point, you know, we'd like to proceed with the, with the structure as designed.
If you view the property, if you look at the Google Maps aerial view of the property, it looks like the rear of the property has some digging going on, some, some sort of land movement. Is that the case today, or is that just an old aerial image?
I can speak to the applicant, I'm not sure myself personally.
I don't understand the question.
Can you approach the lectern, please, sir? Introduce yourself, give us your name.
Speaking to the applicant, they indicate there's no, you know, earth-moving operation or such going on. There is use of that property in the sense that it's been cleaned up, is the, is the, you know, position of the applicant.
Is that the area where there were trees that were felled?
I think the trees were, you know, close to the property line or along the property line.
Okay. And the 73 percent impervious area that you have now, is that all permitted as needed, or might some of that be needing a permit still?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Has there been any expansion of the impervious area without getting permits that might have been needed?
I can only tell you that I asked the engineer to do a calculation, a recalculation of, you know, what was previously permitted, and that's what's being added to at this point. So, we didn't specifically look, I don't think that he went out and surveyed every inch of the property to see, you know, where things were previously and where things may be now.
So, the 73 percent is just based on permits, not somebody actually going to the land?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but a couple of comments after we close.
Okay, so the motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close public portion of the hearing.
Is that in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, so I, and I appreciate Mr. Broder's presentation. I would, I would like to see, I would like to see the board consider that there isn't a business need, in my view, for us to allow an increase of the impervious. I know that it's a fraction, but we've got, we've got a property here that is nearly all, I mean, over 70 percent of it is now impervious, and they're wanting to aesthetically change a building and add additional impervious area. And I don't know that I agree with that.
The rationale given was simply, that's what we're asking. I think the explanation supports exactly what you're saying.
Well, let's just go around the horn, Mr. Cussey, what do you have for concerns?
My thought is, the existing building is not safe and not structurally sound. I wouldn't mind seeing that building go away, and something new be put up. As far as like the racket club, it doesn't affect them, they're down in a, you know, there's a bank in that goes up the side. You know, so encroaching on their property, you know, with the variance, I don't think bothers neighbor, you know, the butter there. In the rear, I have, you know, major problems with, you know, the mess and just, you know, like we want trees put in and just, you know, lighting, we don't want light shining at the neighbors, whatever we can do for them in the back. the neighbors, whatever we can do for them in the back would be big for me. I wouldn't mind seeing a new building, but I know the concerns about the...
Yeah, I mean, I, I thank you, Mr. Cossie, I appreciate your thoughtful comments, and I, and I want to go on record and very much appreciate the applicant on the betterment of this, and so I think that from, from that perspective, certainly like to see, and considerable investment, and I think that that should be in consideration of, of the applicant coming forward, considerable investment on the property in Auburn, which is greatly appreciated. I just take for my own, we all, we all have our own quirks and focus areas, I mean, for my own is I hate to see, or you know, regardless of the law of averages, and if it doesn't change it, we've got a highly impervious lot here.
It's up to 80%, though. Technically, 80% is maximum.
Right, but we're, we're close. I mean, I, you know, when I look at, look at, you know, land use, we're close, and it may not be, you know, my, my argument to stage, I mean, I would also secondarily, so, you know, I'll take it in, you know, one of three points. I also don't, don't have concerns relative to the variance, I very much appreciate and like to see a new structure there. And I appreciate what they're trying to accomplish as far as aesthetically continuing, you know, a line of sight for a particular building, but I don't, I don't agree that just for that fact, we should increase any, you know, even if, even if it's a square foot, any impervious surface, if it can be done in a different way. And I, and I think the answer to that question, in my mind, is it can be done in a different way, just less desirable. I also would share concerns, my third point, final comment, is, is there should be considerable consideration on, on conditions to clean up the buffer area in the back for these neighbors.
Okay. Ms. Place?
I would tend to agree with that, you know, definitely add into the site plan the, the buffer area, make the neighbors happier, I don't know if they're gonna be totally happy, but happier with the view there. As far as the, the square feet addition, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, if they're, if they're gonna build it, they might as well build it, how, how it's gonna work. Like you said, it's, it's under the, under the 80% still, so we're good with that. Just the site plan is my main concern.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
It seems the plan could follow the rules more closely than it has. They're asking what they're asking without explaining why they couldn't make a greater effort towards compliance with, with the rules.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, my thought, just, so what you're saying, Mike, is a smaller building, square footage, would...
Yeah, I guess, yeah, essentially, and I, and I struggle with that because I don't want, I mean, I appreciate if they have a certain vision of expanding this based on how their operation's gonna work, I don't want to get into the business of telling them how to run that internally. So I just suggest, if there's a way, respectfully, to create the same size, because I don't have a problem with the size necessarily, if there's a way to do this and meet, and not ask for relief, work within the bylaw, then I would suggest they do that. And it could be the same size, in my view, but I, because that would even negate my argument on, on the, on the impervious, but if, if they move this toward where it was, I don't think that we have, you know, an increase in impervious surface, if they push it back.
To that, I would say ditto.
And I'm not, and I, respectfully, I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna get in the business of how they want to run their business, and I also want to underscore my appreciation for the betterment here, of what they want to do for the business, so, so I, you know, I can also appreciate Mr. Broder's comment of the applicant, the application is the application, we, we'd like to have this.
Right.
You know, which is absolutely fair. I'd just like to see them to work within the bylaws and not increase the impervious surface, keep the same size but move it back, that would, that would be my first choice.
On an aquifer, also.
Exactly, exactly.
So I, I hear the concerns of the board regarding the plan itself, I also recognize the concern of the board regarding the buffer for the respect of the neighbors. One thing I would like to add is that I think we should look at the lighting on the lot, and I think it should be treated as we do the local car dealerships. They have to be off at a certain time, they cannot be directional off of the property. Security lighting can be used but has to be lower, right, at night, so I think that we've noticed that with the car lots, and the requirements of the lighting that we apply to those, seems to have made some of them, at least some of the neighbors, much happier about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so we don't have floodlights or, you know, security lights shining on people's windows at night and that type of thing. My other concern, I think, as you mentioned, is the, you've swayed my opinion on the impervious surface, so I'll say that. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public portion of the hearing for a minute.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you've heard our concerns, Attorney Broder? Do we have anything that we could modify, change, add to, discuss differently?
Well, I wouldn't want to redesign the proposal on the fly, so to, to the extent that, you know, that's what we're talking about, I don't, I don't know that I would want to do that here tonight.
Right, I agree. So I don't think anybody, if I might say, that honestly, shrinking it to the three-foot setback is not a problem in my eyes, because as you can see the way the existing buildings and the property line goes, I mean, honestly, I think that's a wise choice to actually move it over that way a little bit. But again, I think my colleagues on the board have pointed out, is the, the additional 280 square feet of impervious surface, although it does not sound like a lot, and it may, in fact, doing the math, stay the same percentage, it's our concern with the aquifer zone 3 issue here, and also, you know, there's a lot of construction equipment on there, obviously, there's a lot of diesel, there's a lot of different things like that, and I don't know if there was any digging in this lot in the past, but my concern is if there has been digging in the lot in the past, has the, the recharge system been compromised at all in any way? So, you know, those are the, I know we're speaking hypotheticals, but those are the concerns I have, if people mention digging and, and dropping of road grindings and things like that, that would, you know, not aware of.
So I would just say that, you know, when, when ATS bought the site back in 2007, it was partially gravel, partially paved, kind of chunked up old paving for the, for the most part.
Okay.
There was no drainage on site, no stormwater, you know, and anything on site. When, when this project went in, I mean, undeniably, there was a massive amount of work that went into this site, right, the retaining wall, and the reason the retaining wall is there to make a flat area, we discussed this in 2007, so that they could showcase, you know, the equipment, so that it could be visible, but underneath all of that is a, is a well-designed, significant, you know, stormwater system that is in place with, and I would have to look back at some of the verbiage that was used, but I believe it's in the special permit that was issued in '07, but, I mean, there are, there are measures in there that are in place. We specifically discussed the diesel and the concern, obviously, about the, the amount of diesel that, that is available to be put into that tank, and some of the operations on site. All of that at the, at the time, you know, met, met or exceeded the expectations both from the town and from, you know, from, from any state regulations, so, you know, to me, I haven't heard anything, in my mind, that says 280 feet of new impervious is all of a sudden gonna cause the system to fail, or something to that effect, I mean, to me, if, if it's about the design of the building or the setback, let's just talk about it, if it's about the buffering, let's talk about it, but I don't think that the issue is really the increase in the impervious area, 280 feet, when you look at the, when you look at the bylaw and the standard for the grant of a special permit under that section, I haven't heard really any discussion about, you know, that it's gonna degrade the stormwater system or the water quality's gonna be impacted or anything of that nature, so I guess I'm struggling with that one.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
And so, so the argument would be, and I, and I hear what you're saying, so the math doesn't change in any clinical significance, up or down on a ratio, but I would suggest in being, you know, and I, I want to, I want to not arm up here, but, but quite frankly, you know, as our responsibility is to protect the aquifer in town, a single increase in any impervious surface is a concern to this board, regardless of the math. So if, if we're looking at adding 10 feet, or 100 feet, or 280 square feet, that's a concern. Now, whether or not we have to extrapolate that down to a predictability on a system failure, I have absolute confidence that the systems will be able to handle that, and, and not cause any downturn effect, but this board has the authority to protect the aquifer in such a way that any uptick in impervious surface is something that we can litigate and decide. So I understand that if we're having, so we can agree to disagree, but what my concern here is, you know, it's not about the number, it's about any uptick in impervious surface in an aquifer zone, and I, for one, don't want to, we don't set precedent, but I, for one, on any individual case, don't want a rule that it doesn't matter if we increase impervious surface, regardless of how much we increase it by, and regardless of whether or not we can create a discharge system that handles it. And so, I'll get off my soapbox, but Mr. Chairman, my, my point is that regardless of, if it doesn't change the percentage, we've got a high, a high percentage of impervious surface on this lot, in charge of the, of the aquifer in town, I would suggest that, you know, we could look at any uptick in impervious surface and have a challenge with it.
I don't disagree with you at all.
So, just to, sorry, just to go back, so the, the conversation about, you know, amending the plan in some fashion, obviously, we wouldn't, you know, be able to do that tonight. What I think I'm hearing is it's the increase in the impervious area that is a problem. We certainly need to work on the buffering issue in, in the rear of the property, we acknowledge that. So, you know, I think if it's the, the will of the board, or the, or if the board's amendable, then what we would do, what I'd ask you to do is continue, we can come back and see if there's a way to make the building look a little bit differently than what we've proposed. Perhaps that gets us to the elimination of the increase in the impervious, I'm not sure, without, you know, the engineer doing some work on that, and if the design is still functional, so it's gotta be functional, it's still gonna, you know, it's gotta be all of that, so, but I'm also hearing that the side yard setback isn't necessarily a problem.
I will not speak for the members of the board, but from my point of view, I do not think the side yard setback is that significant, considering the existing building was put there many years ago regardless, and you're just trying to line it up. I can kind of see the point of that, aesthetically pleasing, functional, makes sense, but again, I'm not speaking for the members of the board, I'm always, you know, giving me my own opinion.
Sure, and just doing my engineering on the fly for a second, even though I'm not the engineer, if you move the building back, that's where the pervious area is, so you're making that area towards the side impervious.
Right.
So I don't think that we'd be as far back as we are now, because thus, we're creating more impervious area, so I think it would be, potentially be where the building line is now, and, you know, further into our existing parking area, there's no increasing impervious area there, I just don't know how it works or what works at this point.
You know, I'm almost saying that this could be resolved in some type of landscaping design plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
The area that is 45.9 feet, and it looks to be like 9.1 feet, that area is going to be new building, correct?
Yes.
If you took that jog out, if you took that out and put the jog in, that would gain you back the 280 square feet, and then some.
If you took the strip out?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm...
Strip out, yep.
I can't do the math in my head, but...
That gains you back the 280 square feet, makes the buffer a little bigger.
So the width of the building would be the same as it is?
Right, now, from, if, this all would remain the same.
I understand what you're saying, and I think that, I was saying the same thing, just in a different way, so...
And then you, then you gain back your 280 square feet.
We'll have to take a look at it, and if, if the board's willing, I, you know, I, when we get done discussion, I'd seek a continuance in order to try to do that.
That's right, and then, and then, that's true, and then you don't need a variance.
Probably not, correct.
Because it's already, you already got the variance for what is there right now.
Right, if we, if we, if we propose a building that complies with the existing setback, then we don't need the variance, we may not need your, the special permit to amend the aquifer, impervious special permit, we probably need, depending upon the size of the building, we may or may not need that special permit for increasing or expanding the non-conformity.
I mean, you could probably gain that space where it says proposed building, you have the 20-foot span where the concrete is, you could probably take that space right there, turn that into building, squaring it off, and, and you're taking that concrete, which is not gonna affect the amount of impervious surface, and you're probably gaining more than your requested 280 square feet.
I can appreciate that, I just don't know the operational effect and what that area's used for.
I see that, yeah. So I think what I'm hearing from the applicant here is, you may like to consider a continuation?
If that's, you know, if that's the, the pleasure of the board, and I think, I, I'm hoping we've heard most of what the comments might be, so that we can try to capture those and come back.
I agree, okay, so I'd like to make a, request a motion.
We'll make a motion to continue.
Okay, so we'll have a motion to continue, the next meeting would be...
21st?
March 21st, 2019, would that be enough time for you?
Yes.
Attorney Broder, okay, so I have a motion for an application to be continued until March 21st, 2019, do, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will not, I'm glad that Mr. Jones is here, because I will not be here for that meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you. And I believe, sir, as a, a...
Should you open the public hearing back up?
We did, yes, so, you gotta come to the microphone so they can hear you at home.
I have something to do with that, it has to do with...
I watch a lot of cable access from you guys and stuff, and see us looking at numbers on the paper, walk the property.
Right.
That's all I'm asking, find a date where he's there and Steve's there from the owner, you guys and these three people, and just walk it, and so, paper doesn't tell you, you can see the 3.1 feet and see what they're trying to do, we actually, I don't have any problem with them doing the building, so whichever way they do it, but just walk so you can see, and then you can see what we're seeing, I guess.
Hopefully the weather improves between now and then, and, you know...
That's all I'm saying, so I was bringing it, I forgot to say it earlier, that's it.
And we will definitely take it, yeah, consideration, and we'll take a walk over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that is, continued until March 21st, we'll have a comment and discussion on that this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, the motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's a continuation. So our final application this evening, we're gonna have to do some administrative discussion also, the 7:20 PM applicant, ZPT Energy Solutions LLC, requesting a special permit under 310-23 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the proposed construction of a lot scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic solar facility on property located at 347 Roystein Street, Auburn, Mass., map 29, parcel 7. I do see that the applicant is present, so before we begin, gentlemen, I was just made aware from a fellow board member who has also served as a constable in town, that our solar bylaw has been approved by the Attorney General's office, and it has officially been posted in town. Unfortunately, I was not aware of this before your hearing this evening, and I, we do not have a copy of the new solar bylaw, which obviously presents an issue because we can't abide by it, without knowing what it is. My suggestion to be, is before we get started even, is probably have to request a continuation until the March meeting, and then we can get ahold of a copy of the bylaw, and, you know, we can hear your presentation then.
Okay. Paul McLean, I'm with ZPT.
Yes.
So our application was actually prepared in accordance with the new bylaw?
Okay.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's all planning-related, so it does...
It is really mostly planning-related, I do agree with that, right, and actually, I was on the committee to create the bylaw, it's just that I don't feel comfortable making any really deep decisions without a fresh copy of it in front of me.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Sure, I could print them.
Sure, I could print them.
You want to take a five-minute recess and at least print one copy?
We have one here.
Okay, let me see, is it complete, because it's not stapled together?
Yeah, I pulled it off the town website yesterday, so although I was in the process, I was not able to read it.
And if it helps any, I mean, we, we've already been in front of ConCom Conservation, we made an application to planning as well, we were snowed out on the last meeting, but we actually had a good jumpstart on the project, and we got peer review organized right off, right as soon as the application was made. So Burton Engineering is doing peer review, all accordance with the new town bylaw, we've got a, you know, we've got their peer review letter back, we're actually responding to those comments, we're gonna be back in front of the Planning Commission next week. We will, we will have a response before that meeting.
Okay.
The deadline actually for getting a response in was today, so I expect that, you know, Burton Engineering will review those comments, and we will be continued to the March 12th meeting for planning, but nevertheless, I mean, nothing in the review letter was out of the ordinary, so we expect we'll handle those matters in the next review, and then, and I fully expect that we could have got a board, you know, a planning board approval even at the next meeting, except we were snowed out the first one. So we'll take a continuance at the planning board meeting next, next week, and expect to be back in front of them and close out the meeting on the March 12th event. So if that gives the zoning board, you know, any comfort, you know, the application was prepared in accordance to the bylaw, and it's on, it has been under peer review.
I mean, I actually do, I mean, again, so, Mr. Maron, in your absence briefly, I'm sorry?
Apologies.
No, that's okay. So I expressed my concern, obviously, that we didn't have a copy of the solar bylaw. One of our members did, in fact, print it off the town website, so I'm comfortable with that. Again, as you know, being on the committee as well, it really does lie with the planning board, we're just here for the special permit. So if everyone is comfortable with moving forward, I have a copy here, you can read through it as we discuss, if you want to take a look at it?
And we can walk you through the project, get you.
Sure, all right, so let's do this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
I've already read it, let's make a motion to open the hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the hearing, I mean, I, and just add a comment, I have no concerns about moving forward with it, I mean, I, I think the authority does lie with the planning board, and so, you know, with the bylaw, so, and I'm well familiar with the bylaw that we proposed, so.
Okay, all right, so we have a second, all in favor to open the hearing?
Aye.
Okay, so we stand corrected on that, we'll go ahead and hear your proposal, and see if we can move forward.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. So again, my name's Paul McLean, I'm with ZPT Energy, I'm here with Barry Sculchy, my mentor and much senior fellow over there.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, he's here to keep me straight. I'm also here with Kevin McGarry, he's with Fussin' O'Neill, they're the design engineer for the project. We also have an environmental consultant, LEC, who's on the project, and they, you know, prepared the application to conservation, and we're, you know, we're seeking an NOI there, we have a small disturbance at the entrance that we'll deal with there, and again, we had, I don't expect there to be any issues at the conservation level. Just a little bit about ZPT, we've actually brought another project before the board just a few months ago, and we're back again here for our second project. ZPT is a joint venture between Zero Point Development and Protech Energy Solutions, we're a Worcester-based operation, we, you know, so we're local from that perspective, we've developed in Massachusetts over 100 megawatts of projects, it's gonna be a great year, you know, for continuation of other solar projects all through the various townships. What really sets us apart from a lot of the other, not all, but a good majority of the other developers, is we build the arrays, we own some of them, and then we stick around long-term for maintenance, so we're, it's a business, that's what we do, we develop, we build, we own, we maintain. This project is a special use permit request, the project is located at 347 Rochdale, it's a vacant wooded parcel on hilltop next to the old landfill, I understand, it's a 46.5-acre site. The, Kevin will get into a lot of the details of the application itself, but just a few highlights, there's about 26 acres of the 46 are being disturbed high up on the hilltop. The array itself, it's two, consists of two sub-arrays comprising, you know, plus or minus 15 of those 26 disturbed acres, the rest is, you know, constitutes the roads and the stormwater features and that sort of thing. It's a 4-megawatt AC project, so just to put that in context, we've done 100, over 100 megawatts of development in Massachusetts, this is the kind of size of project that we deal with, so we've done many, many projects. Again, we're already in front of planning, Burton Engineering was assigned early to the project as the reviewer, we've had the review letter for about a week, maybe a little over a week, we're already working through responses, we don't think there's anything out of the ordinary there that we can't deal with, and so we expect to work through that review, be back in front of planning on the 26th. Conservation, we have that application in for an NOI, and we'll be back in front of conservation next Wednesday, and we expect really to close those matters out. Another thing I should just point out, as a matter of policy internally, we actually make an effort to engage the abutters, so we put together our own letter, I understand there's a, the official notification that goes out through the town on each of the applications, but we send out our own letter to the abutters and invite them to communicate with us in advance of, you know, getting to these meetings, such that we might be able to flush out any concerns that they might have and deal with them head-on. We have, well, you can see, we've actually had two of the abutters communicate with us, one was Mr. Contoy, I think he's a ex-fire chief or something like that, yeah, and he loves the project, he just reached out and wanted to understand a little bit about property, the corner of the property where the array stood in relation to his property, and so, the same day he communicated me, I faxed to him, you know, a picture of the plan, said, here's your property in the corner, I told him there's 175 feet of elevation change from your corner up to the top of the hill, over 800 feet distance to the array, and he was very happy, he said, great, good luck, I love your project. The other was the neighbor, Boutilé, I might be saying his name wrong, he owns the property right on the corner, used to be like, from aerial imagery, salvage yard or something like that with old cars and sort, that's what they have since been cleaned up, and he basically reached out to see if he could latch on and have us expand the project onto his property, and we said, well, that ship had kind of sailed, so we, you know, we respectively just declined, and those were the only two guys that communicated with us. So, so I hope I didn't take much of Kevin's thunder, but.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, so Kevin will walk you through the project and get you better oriented, let's see if we can get you guys comfortable with this project.
Sure. So, for the record, my name's Kevin McGarry, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I'm a project manager at Fussin' O'Neill, and site development projects like this is my technical, my personal area of technical expertise. Can you guys all, is this the best spot? Okay.
So I'm just gonna pull this over, it's like.
All right, so Paul, thank you, Paul, you did hit on a lot of the high points that I was gonna hit on. So we are in front of you tonight for a special permit per Section 3.10.2.3, which is that new solar bylaw that you were referring to, large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems do require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, which is the reason we're here tonight. I want to orientate everyone to the property, these colored plans that you see, that I have in front of you tonight, are simply the design plans that were actually submitted, all we've done is throw an aerial image behind it and throw in some color, just to help aid in the presentation. But Rochdale Street is located right here, north is up on this direction in the plan, this is the old rail line, the CSX rail line that runs around, so again, to the north of the property is undeveloped land, along with the former landfill owned by the town, to the east of the property is undeveloped land owned by the railroad, to the south of the property is large undeveloped areas, as well as the residential properties along Crowell Hill Road, and then to the west of the property is, again, large portions of undeveloped land and the residential properties along Rochdale Street. The access for our site, as well as the interconnection, will be from Rochdale Street, there is currently, it's currently an existing access road, small portion of it at the road is paved, and then it's gravel, and this road actually continues up to the former landfill site, we'll be doing some minor improvements to that road to widen it, and it will then turn into our site. The interconnection will be from an overhead pole, or, excuse me, a utility pole on the other side of Rochdale Street, will then come overhead to our side to a new pole underground up to a national grid utility pad here, and then overhead again to the equipment and energy storage pads that are located up at the array. The total area of clearing for the project, so the amount of trees that have to be cut, will be 28.8 acres, as Paul mentioned, I'm gonna correct him, he said 26, it's actually 26.2 acres, that will actually be grubbed, so we don't actually grub the entire area that we clear, and I'll explain that a little more acre, a little more later. Our total area of fence, which includes the array and some of the detention basins, is approximately 22 acres, just to give you guys some context. Let's see, Paul talked about, we have two detention basins, we have a detention basin here, and a tension basin here, the blue little rectangles you see are the individual array panels themselves, and the project will be, again, as Paul already kind of mentioned, adequately screened from the neighboring surrounding properties, just through the large amounts of existing vegetation that will be left after the project is completed. Do you guys want me to talk about stormwater at all? Because I can talk about stormwater until the cows come home. The really short version of stormwater is.
I think the short version will be fine.
Sure, water flows downhill.
There you go, that's short.
So the peer review letter will review, we submitted a detailed stormwater management report, there were several drainage areas that were delineated, and basically, our detention basins capture the increased runoff that result from the clearing, and we don't have any increase in peak flow off of our site. From a recharge standpoint, because I know impervious area is a concern, obviously, the board, the equipment pads are impervious, everything else on the site is considered impervious, mostly of that being the grass that's underneath the panels. DEP does not consider the actual physical ground-mounted racking system and panel to be impervious because of the gaps that exist in between the individual panels on each rack that allow both sunlight and rainwater to penetrate below the rack to promote the growth of vegetation. So every time it rains, groundwater recharge is promoted through the large impervious areas that you see on the site. So again, all that green, and even the salmon-colored gravel access road is all impervious, oh, excuse me, is all pervious, pervious. So we meet all the requirements of the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook for attenuation of peak flow, groundwater recharge, and treatment, really through the implementation of the detention basins for peak flow, and the large impervious areas for treatment and groundwater recharge. From erosion and sediment control standpoint, we submitted a detailed erosion and sediment control plan, again, reviewed by Burton. In general, sort of the sequence of construction is, will come in, and this first thing that happens is the site will be cleared, we will then, but we won't do any grubbing at that point, so it gets cut, the vegetation gets cut down, flushed to the, to grade, large logs are taken away, branches will be chipped, and those wood chips are kept on-site, and they've become very useful for erosion and sediment control. Once the site's been cleared, after all the erosion and sediment controls have been in place, the first thing we do is we build the drainage system, so we'll go in, we'll do all the stumping, grind the stumps, again, keeping on any stump grindings that are required for erosion and sediment control, and all the drainage structure, the swales, the detention basins, those all are the first thing that are built and stabilized before the rest of the array can continue. So in terms of preventing sediment from migrating off the site, you not only have your standard erosion and sediment controls, you know, filter socks, silt fences, hay bales, things of that nature, but we'll have a permanently established, excuse me, drainage system, which, as I mentioned, water goes down the hill, so it's at the bottom of the hill that will also help to prevent sediment from leaving the site. Kind of like the project in a huge nutshell, I mean, if you, if you guys have any questions, obviously, you know, Paul and I are both here to answer anything that you have. And I will echo just Paul's statement about the peer review letter, we're actually, we've been working through it all week, we've addressed some of the comments related to stormwater, and we really don't see any issues with issuing a response to Burton, which we hope to be early next week.
Do you think it's worth the point of the visual buffer and the tie and the hill?
Correct. Sure, so that's a great point, Paul. So right now, this area here is kind of the, it's a top of the hill, and most of the array is what, on this side of the hill, so it's kind of a high point here, and then it slopes down to Rochdale, or down over to the east, so the majority of the array is over on that east side of the hill.
Do we have any abutters that would like to speak?
Yes.
Sir?
I did get the letter, Ronnie Brooks, 425 Rochdale Street, excuse me, I did get the letter, but I hadn't contacted them yet, and I would like to meet with them at my property and take a walk up through and look at everything that's up there, because I've got approximately 60 acres that surrounds this, and I also have the one that's going across the street when it comes, and I just don't want to be looking at them, because there are areas, I don't want the natural trees on my property to be the screening or buffer for their project, because that means that I can never cut them down, and if not, I'll be looking right at it in that side. So I need them to, you know, to spend some time with them up there and look at exactly where it is, and which whereabouts they're going, and, you know, even down where Crowell, the old Crowell Hill Road ends shortly where it goes on to their property, there's a well that was constructed years ago, it's like 10 feet in diameter, probably goes down 25 feet, it was for, I think, the poor farm that used to be up there years ago, they should be, you probably didn't even see it, it should be cognizant of that, and again, I think one of my pieces ends right here, and this, this would all be right in the back, and isn't this a slope going down? Are you on this slope, or am I?
Or the top there.
Is there the end of the houses in Crowell Hill Road and Montrose and that?
Is that better, sir?
Getting more oriented, this is Crowell Hill Road here, where are you, so what's your, what's your address?
Here, and then all around here.
Okay.
So mine ends, and then it would continue like, right up in here, and then it continues, if you continued both lines, you'd come right up through here, something like that.
I think this line, it's like, it's right here.
But this slope here.
If you down the back, it's probably, it's probably a little, that's a, slope going up.
Correct, and we're on the top of the hill on the other side of that slope, but when you come up this hill, like our other butler here, this is, this is.
I understand him.
Yep, and then, then there's kind of a ridge that runs along this edge here, and then it folds back across the other side, so visually speaking, a lot of this through here, you can't, you wouldn't be able to see up through here.
see up through here. This, your, this particular spot where you're at, we could probably, at the planning level, look at, you know, if there's, if I need to do any other visual buffering in here, we're happy to do that without problem.
When we did do the other project across the street, there were some that were definitely straight across offensive, and they, we found a way to move them back and eliminate them in that area. But I still would like to...
I can...
To meet there with you, and we can go right up on the top of the hill and drive, and you can point out exactly where they are. Because from, where mine ends, you know, almost a half a mile from the street, it goes back on one piece, and there's high spots, and from the back of my house, it goes up again, and then you can see the side of that hill and a lot of it if those trees weren't there. But I don't want to not be able to cut my trees ever, because we'll be staring at that.
Yeah. Let, let me get a visual perspective of where you're at. We have a topo that kind of grabs up some of this area here, and then I can do the same thing I did with the other abutment, with a simple visual on, you know, what, what the actual grades are coming up here, so we understand more clearly what's going on in that corner.
But I'd still like to meet you there and go up and walk the whole thing. And, yeah, because even over here in this other piece that I own, you could, you can see a lot of that.
I know.
And I'll point it out, I'll point it out to you, we can drive right through.
Is it all in here, then, or...
Yeah, that's probably it.
Yeah.
The lower grasses, but up in the back it's higher, and then you can, then from over in this new piece, you can look right at it.
All right, well, let's, I'll...
Are you, did you, were you on the letter that...
Yeah, yeah. So if you, I can take your number, and I'll call you myself, and then I'll be back in town on...
Thank you.
But before, before then, I'll do the same thing I did for the other neighbor, and it's just, it, you know, basically read, I'll read the engineering drawings of topo, and I kind of put a layman's touch on it so that I can...
Sure.
Explain away, you know, what they're looking at from the exact viewpoint.
Okay.
Would you want to take a ride up there with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, go through the woods with them, take your...
Yeah, yeah, we'll go for a walk.
Yeah, he knows his way around.
Not a problem.
And I just, two other things that I want to, that you brought up, sir, that I just want to clarify. So the panels themselves, on one of the detail sheets in the site plans, there's a section of what it looks like. They look like the panels that you see on the side of the Mass Pike, just so everybody understands what they look like. And then, from a clearing standpoint, there is a large amount of vegetation that we're leaving on our existing property, so we're not cutting right up to the existing property line of our property. So I just want to clarify those two, two points.
Yeah, in fact, that whole one corner is the downward slope, much of the downward slope on this corner is not untouched, and there's at least, well, almost 200 feet there.
Yeah.
So that's the property boundary. So nothing's happening in here, that's the whole downward slope. You got that distance there, it's like 800, so you've got a couple hundred in here, and it's narrow here.
Yeah, like Mr. Brooks says, he has a higher elevation, and then there's like a valley, and then it goes up.
That's where he's gonna see.
Take a ride in with them, it'd be great.
Yeah, we can definitely do that, and then I think, if I, if I understand the matter correctly, it's something we'll be able to handle at the planning level, and we've got an adequate visual buffer.
Mr. Chacolo, any concerns or questions?
Yeah, that's going to be going forward, that that walking of the land takes place. If we proceed on the application tonight, does that in any way limit our being able to police the permit if we, if we move on it tonight?
It doesn't, because the way the solar bylaw was written, and I think Mr. Barron will agree with me, is that really a majority of the responsibility when it comes to solar bylaws is with the planning board. All we're doing is agreeing to the special permit, literally just by the standards of the special permit, so they can move forward, and all the site plan approval, all the changes would take place at the planning board level. We're basically a rubber stamp.
So...
At this point, for this particular project.
Yeah, so they would have, say, in plantings or trees or anything like that?
Right. As they do with any other project in town when it comes to site plan approval, yeah, that's, pretty much all falls under the jurisdiction.
And we did that on our other project. It was, we had a few more visual perspectives, because we had some very close neighbors and that sort of thing, so we walked each person through it.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points, so I absolutely do agree with you in doing that process, and I have a great deal of faith and confidence in the planning board to meticulously walk through the plan and make sure that it meets requirements, not only for our bylaw. I want to comment on the applicant's willingness and collegiate approach in collaborating with the neighbors. And that outreach program that I'll call it of, you know, messaging, it seems to be above and beyond what would be required, so I compliment you for that. I want to underscore a couple of points that Mr. Brooks had raised, and that, and just because I think we're familiar, and given that Mr. Brooks has given his time to be here tonight, is that we're familiar with, to some degree, his property, although I haven't had the pleasure of walking it. He has some particular concerns based on his elevation and how he's situated, and so I would underscore his concern and your ability to kind of walk through that with him, on the buffering being on your responsibility and not being kind of predicated on what's already existing on his property, to leave him full flexibility on what he'd want to do with his line of sight and his, his screening and vegetation and so forth. But I, you know, I have a couple of academic questions, if I may, on, one of the questions, one of the comments that you had made earlier that I, that I caught on to was, as far as a business model, and you commented on that you kind of stick around for the long term for maintenance. So for my own education, I mean, how, how long have you had, what's the longest running existing program or project that you've had, that you've done perpetual maintenance on?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna...
Sure.
That's why he's here.
And, and this is not a bait and switch question, so, so I'm gonna tell you exactly, I'm gonna tell you exactly why I'm asking it, and this is kind of giving it away in an interview, so you can tell, you can phrase your response. Is it, the reason why I'm asking it specifically, and I want my wife to be able to hear you, she better still be watching.
Sure.
So, the microphone, sir. I'm asking because, from a land reclamation perspective, and I know that these projects have that built in, you know, what, what would be your planning around reclaiming the land at the sundown of a project like this? And that's why I'm asking it.
Well, first of all, my name is Barry Sculchi. I'm a principal in, in the company, and in fact, I've been an owner since day one in one side of the joint venture project. We've been in business 10 years, we've been operating and maintaining systems for 10 years, which in the solar industry is a lifetime. With respect to the project itself, it has a life of anywhere between 25 and 40 years. When that's done, one of the requirements that we'll have to do with the town is we'll have to provide a decommissioning plan, which our responsibility, we're actually, it's, and we did, so the responsibility is to remove the equipment and return the land to its natural state, and if it's not developed afterwards, it will grow and become vegetated once more.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your thoughtful comments. I mean, I appreciate that. And I, I point that out not to expose, I mean, this is, I think, in the span of 10 years, and I appreciate your success, 10 years isn't, is it, it's a lifetime in the solar industry, but this is still very much a new technology for all of us to work through. When you're talking about a lifespan of 25 to 40 years, to me, that's untested. And so, so I rely on the planning board to just put those measures in place at the sundown of...
If I can just comment, maybe in other, like in Europe, systems have been in place longer than any United States. So it's, I mean, it's a, solar itself is a proven technology, there were satellites that, that use the technology to power themselves over the last 50 years.
Oh, please, please don't misunderstand, I'm not suggesting that it's, it's 10 years and, and that's all we have as far as data. I fully appreciate that. Your experience is what I'm speaking to, for 10 years, if you've got a project that's predicted 25 years, what happens beyond 10 years is still right now conjecture.
It is, but, you know, one of the beauties about a solar system is that there are not many moving parts. In fact, there are very few of any moving parts. So, you know, once the site and the system are stabilized, it pretty much runs maintenance-free. So if there are any issues that occur, they're going to occur within the first three to six months, frankly, of the system itself. So, while, and in fact, I would say in Massachusetts, there aren't systems that are 10 years old. We've installed systems in other, in other markets before coming into the Massachusetts market. So I'm very confident, I mean, we, our business model is to stay with the system. You know, we don't walk away, we're here for the long term. We have people that are trained to maintain these systems and make sure that they will operate for their full lifetime.
I appreciate that level of commitment, and you're, and also appreciate your confidence. And how long did we get out of the Mars rover, until the dust covered it? And, but, in, in all, I appreciate your confidence and your expertise, sir. And I won't take the board any further into any academic questions, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Blaze?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
None, thank you.
Okay, so...
I just had one more.
Yeah, go right ahead, that's okay. It's a learning curve.
Your employees that install these bands, are they all licensed electricians? Are they all licensed people, or...
I could, I could answer that.
The answers that we use, the electricians that we're, that we use are licensed, yes. You know, we do the, one of the other things that we do, we do all the earthwork ourselves. We own our, our own equipment, so, you know, they're licensed, they're experienced civil operators, but as far as electricians, they are licensed, yes. That's a requirement.
Okay, we're all set then? Okay, motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, do we have a motion on the 7:20 PM application for special permit?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, congratulations, gentlemen, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so...
I feel bad keeping your things, do they need them?
We have conflict interest training due, so we're moving on a new business, by the way. We have online conflict and interest training, it has to be done by, I believe, the third week in April. So you can log on, if you're not, if you're not sure where to go, you can actually contact the town clerics office, it's actually being... And you can get the information, pretty straightforward, standard, read a few paragraphs, take a 10-question quiz, and you're all set. We have some signatures to do, so if we can pass those around, we'll get those underway. We also have, I'm not sure if you saw this, speaking directly to the members of the board, is the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to allow live streaming on YouTube of the meetings to give another layer of accessibility. In order to do that, we have to put it on the agenda and vote for it. So I'd like to make a proposal that for next month, we put a brief statement or question on the app, on our agenda, to determine if we want to go live streaming on YouTube.
January.
Okay. So is everybody, did you guys catch that?
They would need to double my salary. They'd need to double my salary for this.
So I'm not sure if you heard that, so the Selectmen voted to go with YouTube Live as another level of accessibility for the town, so people can watch it in another medium.
I, I would think it's...
But they have to vote for it, every board does individually, so we're gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Technology is...
Since that's a non-binding thing, we'll all vote for it, because we all are on the board, and we're exposing ourselves a little bit, so...
Yeah, I just don't care. I don't care.
I know, but we still have to officially vote for it. Okay. So, yeah, we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
That was January.
That way we have time to let people know it's coming up.
President. Bob and Rich were absent.
So what they want to do is they want a YouTube, it's another level of accessibility, so we actually have a YouTube channel now, the town has one, and they replay it. So this would be actually live on YouTube as it goes, so like, right now, we're only on public access. They're recognizing that with the different technologies and the changes in the television industry, that it's not being seen as much as they would like. So, but by going by live streaming on YouTube, we might find it to be a little more accessible.
Yep.
You were absent.
I was, correct.
Do we need to vote on the minutes, or no?
Yes, so while we're at it, and you're signing that, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from...
December, in June.
December and January, as Britain submitted.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
And it's all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, minutes are accepted. Who says it?
I forgot to put it up. I forgot to put my name tag on this chair. Apologies.
We'll have to schedule some fines for that from now on.
Agreed.
I got mine too. Actually, I don't want them to know.
Crazy.
I kicked his one? Yep.
That's it?
Yeah.
And the next meeting is March 21st, Thursday night, Mr. Chacolo will not be here.
That's correct.
You... Yep, you're good.
Be nice.
Thank you, motion to adjourn?
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.